Good evening and welcome to the Common Council City Conner'sville Mark VII, 2022 Meeting. Will all rise for pledge allegiance led by Councilman Tommy Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you. We praise you for this day you've blessed us with, and we thank you for each and every one of these council members that you've blessed us with as well. And God, I just pray that you will be present in this meeting, Father, and that you will lead and guide all decisions. Father, we just praise you for what you're doing in Conner'sville and good things that are happening. And we just praise you for that. And we pray that this meeting is a good one, a successful and a productive one. And God, we just thank you for each and every one of these council members here today. Father, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, like that. Welcome everyone. And please remind you to turn your cell phone rings off. We will begin with Roca.
Councilman Gray.
Present.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett.
Present.
Councilman Williams Jr.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilman Rob.
Present.
Everyone has the minutes of the February 22nd, 2022 ready to meet? Are there any additions and corrections to those? If not, let our county motion approve the minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. All favor second signal.
Ah, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We've come to this already this morning. All right, new business. We can take item A, B, and C together, Rosemary.
Resolution 2022-10 is a resolution to reimburse $1,150 into police other contractual. Resolution 2022-11 is a resolution to transfer $80,000 from police vehicles into the police non-reverting. Resolution 2022-12 is a resolution to transfer $12,000 from police other equipment into police non-reverting. Resolution 2022-13 is a resolution to transfer $1,000 from landfill other equipment into landfill non-reverting. Resolution 2022-14 is a resolution to transfer $52,000 from DOT other equipment into the DOT MVH non-reverting other equipment. Resolution 2022-15 is a resolution to transfer $1,119 from MVH other equipment into MVH DOT other equipment non-reverting. Resolution 2022-16 is a resolution to transfer $15,000 from park mower into the park non-reverting. Resolution 2022-17 is a resolution to transfer $20,000 from park other equipment into park non-reverting. Resolution 2022-18 is a resolution to reimburse $15 into the cable telephone. Resolution 2022-19 is a resolution to reimburse $60.35 into park telephone. Resolution 2022-20 is a resolution to reimburse $934.98 into police telephone. Resolution 2022-21 is a resolution to reimburse $816 into first aid ENT drivers.
Questions?
I have a few. $119,000 MVH to DOT equipment. What is that equipment for?
What we do is we budget items in all the different departments, and then we transfer it into a non-reverting fund where we can buy equipment throughout the year and also make any kind of payments that we have scheduled for those departments.
It's like EMS. That we do for EMS, 10% away.
No, it's different.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Now, I'm assuming the DOT does the same thing, the 52,000?
Yeah, the DOT and MVH actually go into the same DOT MVH non-reverting because they're shared equipment.
Is some of that funding supposed to be for road repair or my mistake?
Over 50% or greater, as the resolution is written, goes into an MVH restricted account, and that is, goes into the community crossing grant matching fund.
The other one I have is about the 20,000 for the equipment. Is that a repair for the park?
I think we're moving to the park. It's 20,000 for other equipment and 15,000 for mowers. All of it is going to the park non-reverting. So say she had $5,000 left over from last year, so we're gonna add 35. That'll give her $40,000 to spend on whatever she needs this year.
On all equipment?
Vehicles and equipment.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Yes, we take a motion to approve Resolution 2022-10, 11 through 21. Sorry, I looked at 22. That's the next one.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. I am D. Approval of Resolution 2022-22. This is the opioid settlement agreement that we opted out in, maybe last year when Jeff, I believe. I think we opted out.
That's correct.
No, it was last year or the year before.
It was last year.
Knowing that we'd opt back in at some point, but they had to do a bunch of, all the attorneys said we'd get some agreements together with the state, and this is what they come back with. So we're just recommendation that we opt back in at this point. So if you have any questions, Jeff can answer them. But all this is, is opting back into the settlement we opted out of. Know it sounds weird, but that was the recommendation, and it seemed to work, so. Any other questions?
This was approved by the Board of Works.
Yeah, Board of Works approved it already.
I move we pass Resolution 2022-22.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay, I am E. I'm gonna do the public hearing and approval of pending orders 3772. This is for the $111,000, $658.30 for the...
Bring them all three together if you can.
I mean, they're all additional appropriations.
I say let's just do them.
We can do them separate at this point.
I wanna do the other two separate, if you don't mind. I know it's a little extra, but. So this one's just for the pool payment. Come up from the edit fund so they can make the pool payment. Any questions on that?
This is for the repair of the pool?
No, this is where they originally constructed.
The pool?
Pool. We're still making payments.
The bond payment.
Bond payment.
That's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to just assume.
No, you're fine.
Any questions on that? If not, I retain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3772 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And we have a motion to suspend the rules. Motion is second.
Did you close the public meetings?
Thank you. I didn't open a public meeting, so just a second, counsel.
I think you said something, but I didn't use it.
Open the public meeting.
I interrupted.
Thank you. I got distracted. They want for the public everything to say.
I thought stuff was about right here.
And we'll close the public. Okay. Whew. Thank you very much. So we've had them. Wow, I did it completely backwards, but we had a motion in the first reading. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And do we have a motion in the third and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Phew, can't believe I did that.
Sorry.
No, that's part of it. Okay. And we have the public hearing, which I will open the public hearing this time. Approval of pending orders 3773, which is what we presented last time with the ARP funds, actually ARP funds, with the police vehicles for additional $185,116. The first aid would be, if we could just write, $282,72. And cable TV, cable TV 3, wow, full tongue twisters tonight, $96,766. I will open up a public hearing now. So is anyone from the public? You're the only one from the public. Randy, is anyone out there? You're the only one from the public here, Vivian. We'll close the public hearing and open up cushions from council.
There we go. I have information on the police vehicles. I know they said they only have the 2001s at 43 apiece.
2001s, 2021.
2021s. And that's equipped. I've done some research. I've found a place that has 2022s, the Durangos. They have all six of them in stock. And $35,447, which puts it down to $212,682. So we're doing a $57,000 savings here, which essentially could buy another police car or fully equip the new cars. The other side of that is too, that these are Dodge Durangos. If we're not in a pinch and doing this right away, you can order Fords for $34,000 car.
Randy, come on in. You wanted to do the research on the prices.
Where'd you find those, Clarence?
The Durangos were in Kentucky.
They're police rated?
Yep.
PPVs? I'd like to get that info and talk to them tomorrow. Is that equipped with that price?
No. It's just like the ones that pay for $35,000.
Yeah, because that's what our price.
Yours included.
Yours included the equipment.
Yeah.
Well, not at $35,000.
That's what it started at, though, here. And then by the time you equip them, it's gonna be anywhere from, depending on equipment, $7,000 to $12,000 to equip.
And this place has, it still starts out at 35,47, so you're still running cheaper. That's my point. And I don't, what's the time?
Is that a 2022?
Yes.
So we'd have to order those, or do they have them in stock?
They're in stock.
So, I mean, it's the same price, right?
What you borrow the new car.
These are brand new. I mean, it's...
So are the 21s.
So are the 22s.
They're not.
I get that, but I'm saying that we can save $52,000 on this deal.
You would use that on all the equipment?
You'd use, yeah.
Not, not essentially, because the equipment, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have to keep the equipment in your old cars, are you?
No.
You can't use that same equipment on those.
We're not using any of those old equipment. They're hand-me-downs from 10 and 15.
Some of that's new stuff, isn't it?
Not on the cars we're getting rid of, no.
But regardless of that, if, I don't know the timeframe on this appropriation of money that we're doing here, but if we're not in a big hurry to buy vehicles, then I would suggest that we order them from Bloomington Ford and get them even cheaper.
What's the timeframe on getting those? After you order it?
July.
Yeah, I mean, it's anywhere from six months to a year out.
He says he's getting them in July, probably mid-July.
I don't know if I'd believe it. He tells me after I talked to as many as I did, it's one thing leads to another.
The only, the only thing that this guy in Kentucky's got that he doesn't have six of is Chargers. He said if you want Durangos, he said I can give you six Durangos tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to him tomorrow. Give him a call and see what he has to say.
Because he, he said he's had them.
I didn't research the country. I mean, obviously I couldn't. We can probably pick up a car here and there.
Well, I didn't research the country either. We just talked to him some numbers.
What was the cost to equip them?
Then you also have to find somebody here in town to be able to equip it as well.
Not necessarily. You can or you cannot. There's, he offered up a place, I think, right down the road from him that would equip them. All you have to do is bring your radios.
How much? I mean, at $7,000, that's $42,000 for six cars.
Well, I don't think he said $7,000. I don't remember that figure because I figured that is Perry gonna put the lights in them or not?
No, this place puts them all in.
No, I mean, if you got unequipped cars, is Perry gonna put the lights in?
Probably not. He doesn't have the time to do that. He didn't want to do none of these, so we found this place that equips police vehicles, and they have all the equipment.
But this price that he's giving you is not a, a state bid. The state bid is 34,450. That's what the actual state bid is.
I don't have that paper in front of me tonight, but it was in the upper 30s.
I know that, because Fletcher has a state bid.
But they don't have any vehicles. We checked with them.
They don't have any vehicles. They'll have them in July. But then I located this place through some other resources, and this guy had, he said, I don't know if I can give you six Chargers, but I can give you six Durangos. He said I can even give you Durangos cheaper.
So the, okay, if I don't, the fully equipped, that comes with the lights, the console. Does it also come with like the bumper part and stuff?
The siren, the box. That's a, that's a added thing.
The bumper door is $600. That bumper is just $600.
Well, that's why I was asking for the definition of fully, what comes with fully?
It's everything street legal. All the lights, it's visible enough to the public. It's the center console, the light and siren, box, speakers. It's everything that would make it street legal or safe, road safe.
Make it a police vehicle. I'm having a hard time doing it okay with this John Jones thing because there's newer vehicles out there cheaper, and I don't see why we would want to go with a newer vehicle. I don't care whether they were used or not.
No, I want to see their specs, make sure compared apples to apples, but we tried to get price on newer vehicles, and no one could even give them to us.
Yeah, they said it's, you gotta order prices and...
I can send you the specs. I don't have them with me, but I can send you the specs.
What was the, what was the company's name?
I can't remember his name now.
What's the company's name?
I can't remember his name. It's, I can't remember his name. I don't think I have it with me.
That really doesn't affect. We can still do the additional appropriation ordinances tonight for this amount. If we do find a cheaper rate or, we just don't spend that amount.
Yeah. Let's go back to Board of Works.
I would have thought that it would have been advantageous to have discussed this before tonight's meeting.
Well, if we'd known all this and prior to this, it would have been...
Well, we did two weeks ago.
When did you find that information out?
Two weeks ago.
I found that out today.
You don't have their info?
No, I didn't have it with me. I got it on my laptop.
We're essentially getting new vehicles from this John Jones, and they'll be equipped with everything that we need, nothing more. We're not adding anything extra that we won't need, and it comes out at $7,000. I think we're gonna be the same as this place that Clarence has from John Jones as far, other than the fact of the 21 or a 22, so.
There's still new vehicles.
Brand new vehicles.
And what you ordered from them are Dodge?
Correct.
Chargers?
Some Chargers and Durangos.
He don't have the Chargers. He only, he only has...
This guy don't have the Charger.
John Jones doesn't have all the Chargers, and he doesn't have all the Durangos, so.
That's why you split it. That's why we split it with two, because we couldn't get six Chargers. We got four Chargers.
It's not on there anymore. Salesmen at John Jones, a retired sheriff understands the constraints that I would be in and the way the government works. Those are pulled, so the vehicles that we have held for this is already pulled. You won't find them on there, so another salesman from John Jones could sell it outright. So they have the vehicles we need there.
Like I said, we're saving a lot of money. I mean, you're talking $2650. I mean, $2,650.
Didn't you say it could be between 7 and 11?
Yeah, depending on equipment. And originally, obviously, they sent me their best package, and I just nitpicked it through stuff that we didn't need, like side marking lights and all this other stuff, brought it down to seven.
If it turns out to be 11, then that's $66,000.
Yeah, it won't be.
But I mean, yeah, it could be.
Yeah, their best package goes up to 11, yeah.
One of his packages, John Jones, is $7,416, and you got one $7,361.
Two different vehicles.
It should be the same, though.
It doesn't, yeah, if it's different lighting. I mean, there's two different vehicles, a Durango and a Charger.
I know they're two different vehicles.
Light bars, the inside light bars aren't the same size.
But like I say, I still think this should be a window that the council, the city needs to monitor the money that we spend.
Am I correct that we're not committing this money to any specific dealer if we appropriate, do this additional appropriation?
Not to this, no, but the Board of Works already approved that dealership, so if we want, if he can give us those quotes, then we gotta go back to Board of Works.
Did you just get the quotes, like today or yesterday?
Today. It's the same package as what we have here. Why is the police equipment? They have the, they come with the spotlights, obviously. That's just kind of a standard thing.
That's police package, they'll give the spotlights, but we don't have to add that.
But that's not, that's not a big issue. The other equipment's what he's talking about.
Clarence, this is a dealership down in Kentucky, and then this guy has someplace else to take it to equip it for police requirements? I have no idea.
He does have...
Or is this just somebody, like a sales guy saying he can do this, he can't do that?
No, he's an actual dealer that delivers cars throughout the state of Indiana and Kentucky. Just delivered some and...
What about the repairs? I mean, not the repairs, but the equipping, the cars are that...
The equipment, he said...
They're standing as far as being able to do that.
Police package equipment that Randy's referring to is done by, he's, he's gave me another guy's name and address and basic equipment that other agencies use. And I don't have that information with me. I didn't bring that with me. The biggest thing is the car to me, because when you start out at 35.9 versus 35.4, there's quite a difference.
I understand that.
And they're all the same.
Wait a minute, what'd you?
35.9 and 35.4.
35.4.
What is it? 35.9 and 35.4?
You're talking $500 difference?
Yeah, per car.
Okay.
For basic car.
Okay. I thought we were talking...
Yeah, I thought you, originally, when you, I'm just, when you said it originally, Clarence, I thought there was more money involved. I mean, that's not money, but...
There, there is a lot of money involved. I mean, we're talking a difference of savings of $52,000 for, plus...
If you're talking six cars at 500 each, I mean...
So we don't know what they're...
3,000.
That's 3,000. That's not 50-some thousand dollars.
You never got a number quote for equipment?
No.
That's only $3,000.
That's only $3,000, Clarence.
I don't know what, what your equipment would be.
Yeah, because that equipment might be the same price what you're gonna pay this other dealer. See, that's what I'm thinking.
Everything's gone up.
Yeah.
Price-wise, equipment-wise. The last time any of us ever had to buy an overhead, we're looking at a $1,000 difference than it was just two years ago. So, I mean, the place that's, we're thinking about getting our cars from, they sell police cars and they have their own...
Specialized unit?
Section that...
That's all working.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't go anywhere. You don't have to send it down across town or nothing. They purchase the cars there, and they got their own, and that's what they do, is emergency vehicles. They don't, they have a dealership, of course, that does regular cars, but this place is law enforcement only vehicles.
When you said they're between 35.9 and 35.4...
You gotta understand, if we're talking a Charger versus Durango, his Durango, Durango price and this John Jones is $38,495.
We just, okay, I'm confused, because just a minute ago, you said the difference was between 35.9 and 35.4. That's $500 per car, times six is $3,000.
But you're also dealing with a Durango versus a Charger. So you up your price on the Charger.
So what was, Clarence, what was the Durango price?
For, from who?
From both of them. From Kentucky.
From Kentucky is 35.47.
I haven't the paper on my desk.
It's 38,495.
So that's 3,000 per...
So that's $18,000.
That's 3,000 per vehicle then on that, right?
Yeah. That's $18,000.
So what I'm saying is you can buy the same thing he's selling for 38,495 for 35,47. It still comes out to the loss.
I gotta sit down and see it in front of me.
Yeah, I would too, but you have to have, you have to...
Put it on a chunk, boy.
In order to really know what you're saying, you have to have the figures on the equipment. Because you don't know what the equipment's gonna...
What I am doing, I'm basing it off of what Jones gave us as a base price that he doesn't have.
He don't have to call it.
He doesn't have equipped cars.
Get all the numbers and stuff, but then that's dead land.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, once again, who we buy them from does not affect this ordinance that we have going to vote right now. We can do this amount, and if we get different quotes that have to go before the Board of Works to make that decision, then we just won't spend the entire amount. But the, right now, on the agenda is this ordinance.
Yeah, this doesn't say anything about a dealer.
That is.
We're not committing to a dealer on this ordinance.
Right.
This is just for the possi...
Understanding that, but I wanted to make it clear to the council that we need to watch our money, because we're the ones...
We do watch our money.
Okay, and it's spending it, so that's why I brought this about.
I'd like to see a quote on equipment and vehicles all together, and then go apples to apples and see.
Well, that would be a logical thing to do.
Exactly. And I'm sure you want to, you want to, you want to save as much money as you can, too. That's all, that's all, all of our intent.
Absolutely.
Now, putting that aside, how many, how far out would this put cars? Because I've seen two cars in the last week that are in excessively bad shape, and they're being used.
I know.
Not because they want to, but how far out does that push this?
And is he guaranteeing, is he guaranteeing those cars in July? Because a lot can happen between now and July.
No, he's guaranteeing tomorrow if you want them, because he's got them, is what he told me.
You said July was the date that he would have them.
That's for the Ford. If you want to say, oh, we're money.
Go to a Ford and...
You go to a Ford, and they're, they're up July, just like Randy said.
Randy, what's the, what's the deadline on this other company?
Right now.
Right now?
Yeah, they have, they have them on lot. They're not, they're actually pulled and held for us until we get our proceedings done, because they're going so fast. And it's whenever. I mean, he says July, but I just know how this market's going. It's gonna be next year.
Yeah, it could be. Unless we're sitting...
We can't go any longer.
You can't have it there unless they're sitting on a lot.
Yeah, that's. Javon says, I mean, we have to turn vehicles over. It's embarrassing. I don't wanna put them on the street anymore.
That puts the public in risk.
When we're spending a bundle of repairs and time and.
Clarence, can he put a, a written quote to us, to us as far as from your, where you got your statement as far as what?
I don't see why he wouldn't.
I mean, get that and then put apples and apples on it. Gee, take a look at them and see what you.
Well, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I like.
Randy would have to set up the equipment side of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get that info so I can have him fax us something tomorrow.
Right.
So just give me his info, just text it to me or however, um, who the dealership is and I'll, I'll call them and ask him who puts our equipment in. I mean, I, I don't know what dealership that would be.
I do remember that, but I don't remember this, this dealership's name.
Is that including delivery from Kentucky?
Is yours, including delivery?
No, but it's insane.
It's foot drive.
Right. So you might get the, the other delivery charge too.
Well, Diane, I said we go ahead and vote on this, you know?
They do.
Yeah, if we're not committing, I, yeah, that's a common discussion. I think, I think you're correct. I think we're not committing to a dealer.
Right.
And we're just, we're agreeing to commit to the money.
Yeah.
There's no reason not to go even hold on.
Yeah. And then Chief Polo, he can call the convention tomorrow and get the numbers and everything.
Yeah. See if we couldn't find nothing anywhere.
Yeah.
Because if it's not spent, it's gonna, it's gonna be mean where it is. If.
Hey, it's your recommendations, your floor.
Uh, counsel, but, okay, so if he does get cheaper vehicles, are we able, is he able to still use that money if he needs something else or does that go directly back?
With the ORF funds, um, no, it can go back, it can go back because we have to be, we can't, we can over budget, we can't underestimate on the ORF funds. So if it comes to a cheaper deal, then we just find a cheaper deal and go with it.
But can, can we spend it on more vehicles or can we spend it on something else?
I don't think you're gonna see that big of a savings.
If it's fifty-six. I was just thinking if there's a little bit of savings somewhere, then we could add additional.
If we, we could add another vehicle, yeah, we probably can.
Whether it's a car or whether it's some.
We gotta see the numbers and see what we got left, what we can do.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to pass pending, if nobody else has anything else. Pending ordinance sixty-three.
Okay, okay, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's just do this one.
Wait a minute, since we've been in long discussion, we open up a public hearing.
Did you open, you didn't open?
I thought you were opening.
Can I open up a, thank you. Vivian, keep me straight.
You opened, you opened, you just need to close it.
Keep me straight, okay.
Nobody was here for public. You already closed it. We're in a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I, I've, uh, make a motion, we pass pending ordinance seven, thirty-seven seventy-three on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on first reading, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion, second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
So moved.
And a motion, second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Phew, hope I keep my head straight here. Okay, item G, public hearing approval pending orders three, seven, seven, four. That is the Longwood, the, the hundred fifty thousand for the repair of the Longwood Bridge. I will open the public hearing first, make sure I close it, and then do the council. Phew. Okay, open up the public hearing.
Okay. Now I get to talk on my phone. Uh, Vivian Harlick, um, seven, five, nine, seven, West eight hundred north. And, you have to run, but, um, I would, I, I just got back and, uh, read the article, actually, Javon had posted on Facebook about the bridge. I made a comment saying I was curious why there was only one bid. Since then, I talked to Diana earlier at a Discover Connersville meeting and I'm under the understanding that there is only one company that could possibly, um, do the structural, have structural engineering, uh, that can repair the bridge. Um, I hate to see us spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but we need to save that bridge. I think it's very, very important that bridge stays here. I have compliments from people in Richmond. My daughter had her wedding pictures taken at that bridge. Many, many young couples from Connersville area have had their wedding pictures taken at that bridge and I, I think it's worth preserving, so.
I think what I said was that there was only, uh, there was one or two, I think, what, I can't remember what the.
Catherine, you want?
Yeah, bridge rights.
Bridge rights. There are only two in the country and they are the only ones that are really qualified to, to do this kind of repair. We had other, there were other bid requests or people who expressed an interest, is that correct? I wanna make sure that what I.
We went, we went down that road.
Right, yes, yes.
Several times.
Several times, yes.
And this was the, actually the best one that came out of the whole thing.
Good.
As far as knowing what, qualified, knowing what they were doing and, you know.
And I didn't know it. I just, I just saw the posting and I thought, gee, I hate for us to spend that kinda money, but now we need to save this, this structure. And, uh, it's, you know, certainly one of the last of its kind. Uh, hopefully, this, this shouldn't have happened. The previous people that moved the bridge should've done it correctly to begin with.
Yeah, was it, the whole thing was not done right.
Um, I hate to see the three hundred thousand dollar bid, but still.
They honestly didn't know. They did what they knew.
Right, right.
Do you think so? They didn't know?
It was all volunteers. They saved it and they did what they knew, so we can't fault them for that.
Oh, there were volunteers, so I didn't know that.
So no one really, I mean, they were just trying to protect it. They even tried to fix it and didn't realize, and trying to fix it, they actually made the problem worse. Uh, that's why you have to have a miller, right? He specializes in bridges to understand the structure. We had several people, I mean, Catherine, I looked at several times the people.
These guys just work on Kennedy bridges. That's all this guy does, uh, the bridge right. Um, so we started with Tim O'Rourke here in town, came out and looked at it and he connected me with the contractor who's out of Oxford, who connected me with the bridge right, who they have done projects and they actually move. Uh, Will actually lives, I think, up north somewhere, but, but he moves to wherever he's working on a bridge. That's why we needed to get on his calendar. Um, but I think the most important thing is that's what made this donor come forward, was the fact that we had found the right people to restore the bridge correctly historically. Um, and that's why this person wanted to donate so generously, was because they felt as though we weren't just band-aiding a situation, we were fixing it right.
Yeah, well, I would've been hopeful that we could've gotten enough donations from the community to have done the whole project. But, um, that being said, I just wanna give you my feelings that I think we should spend the money on it, okay?
Thank you.
Vivian, can you give me your address again?
Up seven, five, nine, seven, West eight hundred north.
Thank you.
And I think that's why this whole process has taken so long, is because it was so hard to find somebody that was really qualified to do the work.
It was hard to find the right people.
We wanna do it so there doesn't have to be, they're not doing the same thing down the road.
I started in the summer of twenty nineteen, moving the people and it wasn't until, well, I guess the end of that year, because then we went into COVID and.
Yeah.
On and on, but yeah, we've got the right people lined up.
Catherine, am I correct that it's gonna be able, uh, we're gonna be able to put vehicles on it and things?
Yes, it will be, it will be sound for vehicular. I really don't recommend that because it's, you're not supposed to have.
Right, well.
Vehicles in the grass. If you had like a car show and you wanted to take a picture.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is I think also, uh, I think the mayor mentioned something about like the carriage rides in the winter time. That said, all that aside, it's great, but is part of this quote gonna help to lock that down, secure it?
Hold on a second, Catherine. Let me do the finish of public hearing then while we answer Javon's question. Anybody else from the public out here, Rafi, everything to say? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing now, Catherine, go ahead and answer any questions. I'm sticking to the procedure properly on this one.
Okay.
We just don't want nobody joyriding through there at night or whatever. Is part of this quote gonna be able to fund this funding?
Don't give them the idea.
I'm sure nobody's ever had that idea.
So will we be able to fund it with this current funding to help lock it down at night or after an event, that kinda thing?
Well, right now we have, um, steel posts barricading the, both sides, so you can't get a vehicle on there.
Right, but I assume they're gonna tear that out.
Yeah, every, everything will be new. Um, that's something we could look into. I hadn't really thought about it. Um, what I thought was kind of interesting in talking with these engineers is that it's actually, um, there's more weight from people than there is a vehicle. So if we have an event on the bridge, it actually has to bear a lot more weight than it does if you're driving a car. Um, so if it can hold, you know, two hundred people, it, it can hold a car, but, um, I hadn't really thought about securing it in that sense. I guess we could do some kind of, um, I'm not sure. Do some dishes and then a gate that you could have them away from. It'd be ugly though.
Yeah, you don't wanna detract from.
I would just hope that if we do a prayer that we can find a way to make sure that to some minimal degree that we keep.
Well, one thing we have discussed, um, at the, at Park Board and at, at the park at least, is there is actually an ordinance that is supposed to prohibit people from parking on the grass. And now with the installation of the disc golf, um, it's gotten a little hairy. Some of the disc golfers have been harassed by people trying to pull up and park right next to a shelter. So we've talked about barricading those, the grass with more of the posts and the steel cables. Um, and I think if we did that, then people couldn't physically drive up to the bridge unless it was an event, so maybe that's how we do it.
And that would be something you could remove for the car shows.
Yeah, cause we have to do that so we can get in low. Um, so that could be something we could, maybe that's the first area we look at.
Right.
Is around that.
Or additional security cameras.
Yeah, we, the security features we talked about are lights and cameras.
And my goal is not to try to impede the police or have them patrolling something that could be easily done with a simple barricade. That could then be removed, could be decorated, whatever, and then put back.
I kinda like the idea of blocking the grass off, cause that's kinda two birds with one stone.
It is.
Something to that effect.
Something you need to do anyway.
We do.
Yeah, because when, people who have, sometimes who have the things in the shelters.
There's no need to have to pull right up next to.
And they shouldn't have to, right.
And even if you just unload and then move your car, that's fine.
There's ample space for parking.
And then with disc golf, it's, you know, we don't want anybody to get hurt, so, yeah. Is that it on the brand?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve pending orders three, seven, seven, four, on first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And I have a motion for a third and final reading.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we went down to old business. Anyone have any old business?
Yes, um, had a discussion with the attorney. I think at this point for, I think everybody's gotten the park protection ordinance that I put out as a, kind of a FYI. That's kinda works its channels. Uh, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're in favor of it, the police department standpoint. And again, to go back over it real quick, uh, main focus of it is to focus on, uh, eliminating sex offenders that are currently on the registry. They have to be national, or they have to be registered and once they are registered and while they're on that registry, this ordinance is to prevent them from being in our parks. Obviously, the police are not gonna be at every entrance to hang out and, and interview every single person that comes in. However, it is a catalyst and a tool that for any vigilant parent in the public that happens to come across a registered sex offender and then call the police, the police then at that point have a tool to address the individual and if that individual does not leave, then they can at that point enact state codes, IC codes, and then elevate it at that point. This is not an attempt to put extra people in jail or anything, but it is an attempt to give our police department a tool and closing loophole to, uh, do what they gotta do to help protect us. Uh, but we have to give them the tool to do it and this will, this will help with that. Uh, there's gonna be a detailed version, I think the attorney's gonna work on and then present us with a, uh, draft or an official copy on the next meeting and then we can vote on it from there. There are no, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no fees involved, so it won't be a public hearing.
We won't have to have a public hearing.
But I encourage anybody to reach out, talk to people, get their feelings on it and then we'll discuss it again in our next meeting.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, thank you guys for listening.
Absolutely. Any other old business? Miscellaneous business? Public, have any to say?
Spring is coming.
Not soon enough for me. If not, take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
A motion, a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Good evening.